For the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just to let everybody know, in case of an emergency, exits from the back of the building and the side of the building, if there's a reason to evacuate, we will let you know.
Okay, at this time, obviously, I think this is the first time since I've been here that a meeting has fallen on September 11th. And I know that there are many young people in this room that have much less of an idea as to what we experienced on that day, but it's still important that they understand the significance of not only what happened, but also of the responses and the humanity that exists in this country, in this community, and in many cases around the world. And I'd like to start with, well, several pieces that will help us to recognize the significance of the day, and I'd like to start us off with the Huntington High School Chamber Choir, under the direction of Ms. Victoria Garberino.
Yeah.
And while they are setting up, I'd just like to thank everybody for their patience.
Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home.
If that doesn't give you the chills, then nothing will.
It's beautiful.
For those who had a chance to take a look at our Facebook page today, or may have even had a chance to be in the high school this morning, it just gets better and better every year. That said, related to a fairly solemn event, but the ceremony that they conduct at the high school chamber choir, reading this morning by Sam Bergerman, followed by some very poignant words by Mr. Cusack, and then the playing of taps this morning by Kristen Tate and Aidan McCuey, it was... It's hard. It's hard knowing that I was there, knowing where I was at that very moment on September 11th, 2001. But we are committed to helping our students here understand what happened there in context and in a grade-level appropriate way. And in that light, I'd now like to introduce Ms. Donna Morrow, principal of the Jack Abrams Ten Magnet School, to present a few special guests.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It is always wonderful to bring our students into this venue and show off all of their wonderful things that they do, but it is with a heavy heart that we are here today. We've gathered the student council members from both Jack Abrams and Wood Hall, and they're going to do three readings for us in remembrance of those that we've lost on 9/11. The first reading that they're going to do is from a class of students the year after 9/11. It was a teacher who lost a loved one during the event, and she had her students compose this first reading. So first up, we're going to have Adriana Abatello and Jasper Elgart.
Before September 11th, we would wake up with a list of don't forgets. Don't forget to wash your face. Don't forget to brush your teeth. Don't forget to do your homework. Don't forget to wear your jacket. Don't forget to clean your room. Don't forget to take a bath.
After September 11th, we wake up with a list of remembers. Remember to greet the sun each morning. Remember to enjoy every meal. Remember to thank your parents for their hard work. Remember to honor those who keep you safe. Remember to value each person you meet. And remember to respect others' beliefs.
And next up, we're going to have Jack Rukowski and Jake Amend.
"We're Still Standing," by a 7th grader. Those twin towers, standing tall with pride, fell with grieving hearts. Stunned, America cried, but we're still standing. Bin Laden tried to crush our land.
But we stood our ground with flag in hand, and we're still standing. Red for valor and the blood that fell, white for purity, our hearts, our heroes tell. Blood for the justice that will be done, proving once more these colors don't run. And we're still standing.
And last but not least, we have these three lovely ladies. We have Reese Rinaldi, Kira Coulter, and Michaela DePico.
"I stare in total disbelief, heart torn with instant grief. Plumes of black smoke fill the air, marking a building no longer there."
"I close my eyes, I want to pray, but my mind doesn't know what to say, much like Pearl Harbor so many years ago, so many gone with one fatal blow. There are no words to explain, there are no words to ease the pain."
"Those who gave their lives, mothers, fathers, husbands, and wives, to all whose life today did cease, may your soul find instant peace. We will honor you and the life you gave as a patriot of the land of the free and the home of the brave."
Great job, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank all of you for being here and for being so brave as to read tonight. I'd like to thank your parents for bringing you. And I hope what you get from this, and I'm going to cite a little bit from what Mr. Cusack mentioned this morning, to the high schoolers. Mr. Cusack, who has two relatively young children, who recently, he recently brought them down to Ground Zero, they can't grasp it like we can. But the question that he mentioned that has come up in their minds quite often is why? And it's a question that really can't be answered. And he mentioned that the better question really is how. How did we come together? How did we learn that selfless acts can drown out any of the negativity? And that is something you should take with you from this day, if you haven't already, forward. And it's happening right now. It's happening in Houston. It's happening in Florida. People coming together, rushing down into danger to help others for no other reason than that we are, we are all human beings and we are here for each other. At this point, I think it would be the culmination, a moment of silence, in honor of those who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001, and also those who lost their lives in the recent devastating weather events in both Houston and Florida, up and down the coast. And ladies and gentlemen, always remember that we are stronger together.
Oh, her for me. Okay. Thanks.
I was actually in the city that day and witnessed the attacks and lost someone very close to me, so.
It was a brutal day.
We have some approvals. First one is a Board of Education meeting, and it's from August 28th. If I get a motion to approve.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
That's Jan and Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. There's also an FYI on some budget appropriation reports for the general school lunch and special aid funds as of August 31st, an FYI for revenue status reports as of August 31st, and new approval for the treasurer's report of July of 2017. If I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Emily, and a second?
Second.
That's Barry, all in favor? That is everyone. There's also warrants from August 30th of 17. If I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry, and a second?
Second.
Phil, all in favor? And that is everyone. That said, moving on to board member communications announcements. Is there anything anyone would like to share?
Well, I guess I'll start with the parade that many of us participated in on Saturday. It was a parade that was actually before our big football game and the marching band, but this was a parade that was part of the unity in the community Huntington Awareness...
Awareness Day.
Awareness Day, thank you very much. And so it wasn't just Huntington School District, it was South Huntington School District. I think Elwood was represented. There were some scout groups there. And it was, it's a lovely idea, and I, you know, think that anytime we can unify our community, it's a good thing.
Yes, there was unity in the community.
There was, and it was a lovely day for a walk.
Even though the train did come.
It split our parade, and we really need to impress upon them to reexamine that parade for next year. Over train tracks, not a great idea.
Check the train chain schedule.
I think they like the parade, but I think they're keeping it.
Well, then they need to check the train schedule. That's what I would suggest. Frankly, half of our parade ended up on one side of the train, and then the train came and the other half, and, you know, it just didn't seem like the best planning. Somebody else speak, quick.
Okay, I'm trying to, but you keep going.
Go ahead, go ahead, Chris. Jump in.
I just wanted, I wanted to remind everybody when there was a fuller room that tomorrow was primary day, and every registered voter in Huntington should have some line that they could vote on, so please go vote. If you don't know what line, just go, and they'll tell you which line you can vote on.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll take that as a no, and move on to the superintendent.
I have a handful of things here. First of all, this morning opened the September Regents meetings. It's been kind of quiet over the summer, but the Board of Regents and the commissioner returned to the table today to discuss some items that are going to impact all of us, all school districts across New York State. And I'm just going to highlight a few of the items that were discussed and actually approved this morning. First of all, the state's Every Student Succeeds Act plan was approved by the Board of Regents and will be submitted to the United States Department of Education by September 18th. We do anticipate that we will hear back as a state from the US DOE by January or February. That is, that's the timeline that's on the table right now. There are a number of things that are included in this plan. I certainly encourage you to keep up with media reports on this that impact accountability, that impact the types of things that the state will be looking for in all school districts that, well, how they rate school districts in an objective manner. And it'll go beyond just test scores. There are still some things that need to be discussed. I will tell you that there are three items that the state has submitted a waiver for, and some of these things have been brought up in the past, and I don't know how they're going to be responded to by the United States Department of Education, but that is, we are trying to avoid, once again, double testing for high-achieving middle school students enrolled in high school courses. So for example, those students who are taking the algebra course or the earth science course, we don't want to have to give them eighth-grade assessments at pretty much the same time. We're trying to avoid overtesting, not add testing to their plates. They are looking at a second waiver on ELA testing for second-year English language learners, those who have arrived in the country and are being forced to sit down for an exam that they're clearly not prepared for. And also, we are asking for a waiver related to testing of students with disabilities, in effect, to test them based on their academic level as opposed to their chronological age. So there are some of the things that New York State has considered. And again, the factors they'll look at include school climate, student growth as opposed to student achievement. There are a lot of things that are built into this plan, and I can only hope that it's not just more of the same. Also approved this morning were the Next Generation Standards. That is the replacement for what they have been calling the Common Core for the past few years, and it looks like those standards are slated for full implementation by 2020, and the first assessments based on those standards won't be until 2021. They will continue with the current program until then. There were a set of new arts standards, Mr. Reynolds, you're probably aware of this, that will emphasize conceptual understanding, not just knowledge and skills. This will be a transition year, and the full implementation will be in 2018-19. They talked about an additional high school equivalency pathway. What they're looking to do here is count Regents' paths toward task completion. Task is the new term for GED. It's a new exam that replaced the old-style GED years ago. And they also talked a little bit about CTE, Career and Technical Education, flexibility for middle-level students. At this point, there is some flexibility, it's already in place, actually, given to middle schools that have family and consumer science programs and technology programs, a little bit of mixing and matching to get kids what they need to prepare them better for high school and beyond. So that's what happened today, and that was just the first day of meetings, so it was a busy September morning in Albany. Okay, that said, I do want to thank everybody in the room and those not in the room for, minus a few transportation glitches, a very happy and seamless opening across the district. It's, and I mean what I say, you feel like a kid. 27 years in this business, you feel like a kid on opening day, no matter what. It's a lot of fun to be around those smiling faces. And we did introduce our first universal pre-kindergarten programs in district. I don't know if I would succeed as a UPK teacher myself, but it's a pleasure to have these little guys in three buildings within the district. I'd like to thank our technology and facilities people for really amping this place up over the summer, a lot of work done, transportation staff dealing with those little glitches. And I think we had a great opening before school opened, conference day, just a lot of positivity in Huntington, and I can't help but think this is going to be our best year yet.
Can I jump in on one thing that I mentioned?
Sure, can I say earlier, and that'll piggyback on that, because I did want to also
thank George for his last-minute addition to the high school with the sidewalk that was put in for the students, and it was ready for them to go, all the kids that are walking in or get dropped off. And I think it's going to make a big difference to the safety and just how quickly you got on board and got that done, we very much appreciate, in addition to all the other work that you've done.
I would second that.
He does good work, and I don't think he, he spends as much, if not more, time here than I do, and that's hard to swallow for anyone. A couple of other announcements. We talked about Huntington Awareness Day. There is a program that has been marketed among the school districts in the township, the Be Smart, Don't Start program, drug awareness prevention that's taking place on Thursday at the Huntington Fire Department, and we have spoken all summer about designating Thursday as a no homework night. So even if the program is not age-appropriate, it's a great night for families to read together and to talk about the importance of making good decisions and healthy choices.
What are the age limits you think it's appropriate for?
I have been talking about it as secondary, secondary middle school and high school. I think below that, it's a little young, but it's certainly not too early to start talking about taking care of oneself, lifelong health habits that never grow old. That's on the 14th, this Friday. In this, in this room right here is the Town of Huntington Annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration. We will be honoring a number of students from Huntington. I should also mention, at the Huntington Awareness Day Parade, we honored a student who is currently a senior at Huntington High School, Emily Andrea Miron, who is, what a spectacular young lady she is, and I believe she received this honor at last year's ceremony. So many great kids, and you'll see a couple of them on stage, and rightly so on Friday evening.
That's at 7:00 or 6:00?
That's at 7:00 o'clock here. Then also approaching is the Booster Club Dinner. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Mrs. Ferris?
That is, and what is my date on that?
October 19.
October 19. And we're also doing, I thought Michelle was going to be here, so I was going to let her. Oh, you are there, so I'll let you speak, because I want you to talk about the raffle, and if you, if you were going to be getting up about that, when it's public commentary time, yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, I know, I didn't, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. So, but the dinner is coming up, and the honoree is Judge Asher, who is an alumni of Huntington School District, has done a lot to support our students throughout the years and is visible at a lot of different things, and he's been very generous to us as a district, and we'd love to get as many people to come to that dinner and support the Huntington Booster Club, as well as Mr. Asher.
I also see Mrs. Roark in the audience, and just a reminder that HEPI is, remains as active as it has been in many years, and the support that they provide us in numerous regards is unparalleled. The annual gala is, of course, coming up after the new year, but the grant applications are already online, will be shared again with the teachers directly. We need to give both of these organizations our full-fledged support. Last thing I'll address, just in case there are people in the room who have any questions, I think we've certainly answered most of them at this point in terms of our search for a Flowerhill principal. We have a very capable interim principal who is serving in that capacity right now, and we hope to have a candidate ready for the board to meet in October, or as long as it takes. Okay?
All okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to our first public commentary of the evening. Public commentary is limited to 30 minutes total time. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. First part of the public commentary is limited to items for discussion and action. Once all speakers are exhausted for that portion, and we have time remaining, then other topics may be brought up. As a reminder, please, no mentioning of student names, faculty names, or anything else. Anyone who would like to come to the microphone, you may do so now. State your name and your affiliation to the district.
Hi, I'm Michelle Deegan, district parent, and I'd like to report on what's going on with Booster Club. So Booster Club supports financially the sports and athletic programs in the district and supplements the school budget, and we're one of the many great volunteer, parent, and community organizations in the school district. So some exciting things, as Barry was saying, the dinner is coming up, the annual dinner honoring Jerry Asher, and I have invitations here, and lots of people will be getting them in the mail, and they will be available on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter, and it'll be everywhere for you to see. So a great evening. Music, raffles, dinner at Crest Hollow Country Club, October 19th, 7:00 p.m. Something new, the Booster Club is starting a new raffle, which is very exciting. As a donation, we are selling 500 tickets, $100 each, and the first prize will be like a 50-50. The first prize will be $20,000 cash, so again, only 500 tickets available at $100. Second prize, $3,500, and third prize, $1,500. So we will be selling these raffles through June, and the drawing will be at the athletic dinner in June here at the high school. So that's great, and I have the raffles here, if anyone's interested. And please spread the word. And ongoing is the field banner program here at the high school. We have basically filled the fence here at the high school with family and corporate field banners, congratulating graduates and families who have attended and graduated the high school, and so that's awesome. And what else? We are always looking for volunteers at Booster Club. The meetings are going to be held every first Wednesday of each month at 7:00 p.m. at the library here in the high school, and there are lots of volunteer opportunities, something as small as helping out in the field house, selling snacks during football games, to helping coordinate large events.
I have to, that's three minutes.
Three minutes, so sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Don't sell any raffle tickets to Barry, she wins everything.
No, it's not Barry, it's Pat, actually. I said, my 25 that I have to sell, I'm just going straight to X. Save the winning one for me.
So that takes us to our first item for discussion and action, the Board of Education Goals for 2017-18.
Okay, we have, we've posted our draft goals the past two meetings, so we, to save time, I don't think we need to put them up there again. There is one goal that we have continued to work on, and we had some preliminary back and forth about this, and it looks like we'd like to conduct a little bit of additional discussion on goal number nine, so rather than try and force that in without having that discussion, I think we're going to hold off until the 26th to have this conversation, if that's okay with you guys.
That makes sense. Everybody good with that?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Moving on to the district-wide school safety plan.
This is an annual requirement. Actually, the requirement's changed significantly, starting during the last school year. Very intricate template that has to be completed by every school district, and this plan that you're looking at here has been modified. We did, most of the work was done last year, but tweaks have been made to reflect some of the recent changes we have made for the 2017-2018 school year, and this does need to be board-adopted.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve?
Done.
And a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have one quick question, Jim. So the district-wide safety plan is public for public consumption?
Correct.
Right? But at each school, there's another plan that is not necessarily public, right? So that, so that in the event that there's something that happens, the staff knows how to respond, but it's not something that's...
Correct. The district-wide plan is a little bit more generic, generic enough where it can be posted publicly. Following that, every school, under the, really the direction of Kathy's, Kathy, Kathy and Kathy's office, each school develops its own safety plan, and there's information that's specific enough in there that we do not want to make it public in the event of an emergency or a crisis situation. These are things that we would not want people who were looking to do the wrong thing to have knowledge of.
Okay, just want to confirm.
And that those safety plans for each school, they're not accessible by way of FOIA?
No, they aren't. No, they are not. There is confidential information in there. We do have to submit them to the, submit them to Albany, to the New York State Police, but they are definitely not foil-able.
Local police get that too?
We do. We, we give them, I mean, there are schematics in there, there are things that, that...
That template was something else.
It, it's a lot of work, but when you, when you look at, at why we're doing this, you just don't complain.
No, absolutely.
Just a quick mention, I think I had shared with you last year that there is an app where it's a system that works with student management systems that, well, districts already have, that in the event of an emergent situation, there can be communication in real time among faculty members. Did you guys ever...
We, we are actually looking into, and this is going to go along with e-school, there is, there is an app that we are actually going to pilot before this year is over and if it does work as we think it's going to work, it'll be in place as soon as we can get it in place.
That's great. So there's actual communication and...
But it, I mean, in this day and age, I, I can't stress enough, you've got to take every protection possible. I, I mean, I had, I was conversing with a parent the other day who was questioning why we don't post bus routes online. We posted the rest of the transportation guide. Speaking with Mr. Hoops, we don't put the bus routes online because I don't want anybody randomly accessing our bus routes and knowing where our kids are going to be waiting and at what times. We don't put bell schedules online anymore. There's a lot of things that we just don't...
Right.
I mean, if you want it, you can get it, but it's not something we want to publicize.
But even like if there's, let's say, a kid was out on a field really far away and there was a situation, you know, to be able, I know we have walkie-talkies, but to be able to, you know, have response in real time, you know, quickly...
And we have that.
Things that are like that, but that's even, that's also very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, that's great. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? So have a motion and a second. All in favor? That is everyone.
And then there they are.
Moving on to the school safety plans.
Well, we just had that discussion as well. They still have to be board adopted, although the plans themselves are not made public.
So can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Xavier, a second, look like Jen.
I'll second it.
Or Emily? Okay, all questions have been answered, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? That's everyone. And then we have a confidential personnel matter.
And this is something that would need to be approved prior to taking action on personnel. Hence, it's being included here as opposed to on the business agenda.
Get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry and a second.
I have a second.
Okay. People talk about it, so all in favor? That's everyone.
Thank you.
Moving on to curriculum and instruction.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve CSE/CPSE submissions as delineated.
So can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, that was Barry.
In concert. Jen, oh, that was close.
I would like to do that in stereo.
Okay, all in favor? That is everyone. Next.
The RTI plan is also attached tonight and it's very similar to the plan from last year as the cut scores were the same and the criteria for AIS services did not change either. However, the tool that we're currently using to screen students is AmesWeb and the version that we are using will not be available after this school year. Therefore, we'll be looking into the AmesWeb Plus platform in the coming weeks. And if we look to adopt it in the 18-19 school year, we will be looking to utilize the program for students in grades K through eight, most likely, rather than K through six as it stands now. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, adopt the Attached Response to Intervention Academic Intervention Services Plan for 2017-18 school year.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Emily and a second. Christine, anybody have any questions?
I do. There's a lot of screening assessments out there. You say you can use the next version of AmesWeb as well if you look at other assessments and determine what it is about AmesWeb that we prefer over the others available.
There are several diagnostic assessments that are used in, in many districts. AmesWeb happens to be a research-based, curriculum-based measurement that is in the, when it's being delivered to students, it's very efficient time-wise and it provides information to screen students and give a red flag to then further diagnose them. Some of the other assessments that other districts have used and that we've tried in the past, which I believe we had used iReady.
We did.
It was a very extensive assessment that took students and teachers out of the class for extended periods of time, which is why I believe the district has found AmesWeb to be very successful because it does the job in, in a more effective timeframe. However, if we see the AmesWeb Plus platform and it's not something that we think would be beneficial to our students, we will certainly be looking into other avenues as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? So have a motion and a second. All in favor? That is everyone.
So also looking at the professional development plan, there were only a few changes to the PDP from last year, which include an update to the data charts. And we also added the consultants that we're using for professional development so that teachers and administrators can get their CTLE hours when attending any in-district professional development. So it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the district's professional development plan for the 2017-18 school year.
Okay, so get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second.
I'll second it.
Emily, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That is everyone. Moving on to personnel.
Okay, here we come. Are we ready? I am asking for the board to approve personnel items on schedules 3, 5, 8, 10, 13, 15, 16, 20, and 22.
So everybody has that? So if we could get a motion to approve? Christine, a second?
Second.
Barry, anybody have any questions?
I have one question. We have a club advisor for the robotics team. Are we going to have a second?
We do have a second.
Oh, we do? Okay.
So on the, actually, we just completed, Mr. Graber and I just finalized an MOA, which is actually on the business agenda. That second stipend, which is not built into the contract, is on that agenda.
Okay.
On that memorandum of, of agreement. You'll also see on that same MOA a number of clubs that don't match the titles that are in the contract. We both know that there's some work to be done there, but this reflects some of the clubs that have superseded based on student interest, some that have not generated that interest recently have been taken off and have been replaced by these others and the robotics second stipend is, is one of the things that we've added.
It's pretty cool we've got all the spring coaches already.
That's what the contract requires. So, I mean, not all of them, but most of them.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I just wanted to ask one question. I know one of the items is the, looking for approval of the neighborhood aide and wondered if you could just explain a little bit more about what that role would entail.
The neighborhood aides were on the last agenda?
That's on, for tonight's approval.
Yes, the start date is different.
Oh, this, I'm sorry, the start, we had, one of them, we had on the last agenda as a start of September 1 and we, you're right, we changed the date.
No, I'm talking about just, just Joel, the, the job in general.
It's, we, we were actually working on, and I don't have it with me, we were working on a job description today that we're going to share more formally because we've tweaked some of it. It is a civil service job title and with that job title comes a description based on what civil service sees as the role of the neighborhood aide. We, we tweaked it to make it work for us, so there, there is going to be a number of different facets to this and a lot of it will be serving as a community liaison, working with our staff here to better engage and to work directly with parents, community organizations, and other entities that exist outside the school district in terms of any communication gaps that might exist. Also putting together programs for both students and parents during and after hours that help them to, to better take advantage of the services and, and the opportunities that we offer in Huntington. And there will, will be some other collaborative type entities when, when, when people need help here in terms of communicating with segments of the population that may be less apt to join us in a school district setting.
Great bridge between district and home.
That's what it's designed to do and, and, you know, it's, it's going to be a, a little bit of a living, breathing type situation because as we see a need, the, you know, if something's not working, we're going to change it and when it is working, we're going to expand on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? That is everyone. Moving on to business contracts and business donations and such. United Way and Ms. Akka.
Exciting. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approve items I through L on this evening's business agenda.
Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry and Jen is the second. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
What are the books?
I'm just going to say...
No, I just want to know, like, what kind of, are they, like, what in the book? Are they books that we applied for or, like, what's the specific...
Do they come with sunscreen?
No. They were books, I think, originally, right, that went there, it's there and now they're coming back.
Are they, do they relate to, to the...
Youth court.
Youth court?
No. At the end of last school year, this was an initiative from the councilperson involved here that collected books from a number of school districts that were available for use across the board in the town of Huntington. So these, some of these books are, are new to us and some of them we've seen before.
Okay.
There are no, there's no specific genre included here, it's just a, a number of different titles that we can take advantage of.
Okay.
Okay.
So should I make my announcements about the donation?
That is, that'll get approved.
Oh, we didn't do it yet, right?
Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I do too. I have another question because it also doesn't say the school supplies that, that are being donated. What are those, like, what are those?
Okay, let's, let's, let's go, go to that directly. That actually was something that came to our attention last week and we reacted very